For June 18th, 2019, please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Thanks, everyone, for coming tonight. Call the roll, please.
Yes. Councilmember Dorsey.
Here.
Councilmember Inesco.
Here.
Councilmember Cronz.
President.
Mayor Rogers.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember McDowell.
Present.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Here.
Thank you, Donna.
You're welcome.
Do we have any late changes to the agenda?
We do, Mr. Mayor. Counselor, staff has two, one and a half. One of the items we want to add to the business agenda would be, we have an appointment for a council member for the Tiny Homes Village project. The other one is a request from the Association of Washington Cities to add up to three delegates for voting purposes for the AWC board. The second addition is to the action agenda, and that is for the Department of Commerce, Basin III grant extension.
Okay. Thank you. Any agenda changes from the council? Okay, is everybody good with the closed agenda changes? Right? Thank you. Next, we'll start with council reports. Councilmember Dorsey.
All right. Well, other than, it's been a pretty quiet couple of weeks for me, but other than my normal study sessions and council briefings, I mean, we're going to be going on a landfill tour here in the next couple of days. I think it's on Friday. And that's it for me. I'll let you guys talk about the AWC.
Councilmember Inesco.
Besides our normal meetings and briefings, I attended the Blues, well, the Joint City Council with the County Commission. And the Blues and Brews this weekend, Chamber put on another great function downtown. And I just attended the Oakland Bay Marina ribbon cutting. And all next week, I'll be at the AWC conference.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Cronz.
Yes, tomorrow morning, I will be attending my monthly Criminal Justice Board meeting with our police chief. And next week, AWC, for the public out there who doesn't know what that stands for, is Association of Washington Cities. It's an organization that we, as city council members, can network with other cities on like-minded projects or ways they do business. We have seminars and things like that to bring, you know, information back. It is a, has a political arm to it, and with lobbyists and whatnot, that we can join forces with other cities to help us all accomplish our goals. And so, that's what's happening next week. It's an annual event, and it's been extremely beneficial to the city of Shelton for all of the knowledge and that we have been able to obtain at that conference. So, that's in Spokane, and that will be next week. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. My schedule this week includes an LTAC meeting tomorrow, and then a Crossroads Housing meeting on Friday. And next week, as Councilmember Cronz explained, the AWC convention in Spokane. Deputy Mayor Peterson.
In addition to constituent meetings and briefings, I attended today's ribbon cutting at Oakland Bay Marina. I will also be at Association of Washington Cities next week, and my opiate stakeholders meeting, and Peninsula Regional Transportation Planning Organization meetings both take place next in July.
Councilmember McDowell.
We had our joint county-city meeting, briefing with Jeff, met with a constituent who had some concerns about a few things going on in the city. And next week, I'll be in Spokane also.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Good evening. Had a MaceCom board meeting last week, and EDC board meeting as well. And one of the things I wanted to extend to staff, Dr. Apostles on the EDC board, and he was discussing in the roundtable portion of the meeting about the project with the schools. And actually, I wanted to extend his thanks from the school district. Any thing that, any interactions that the schools had with staff here has been excellent, and he appreciates everything that you guys are doing to help move that project along to hopefully open the doors in September for classes. And one other thing to note from the school district I thought was worth noting, so Washington State average graduation rate this past year was 73 percent graduating on time. Shelton's school district graduated at 85 percent on time. And actually, at the five-year mark, that number is a lot higher, 92 percent. So, I thought that was, that was pretty awesome. And as a supporter of Graduation Matters and father of two, that's good stuff, and look forward to our school district prospering over the next year with new facilities and all the wonderful things that come with that. So, I just figured I'd pass that along. Thank you.
Thank you. Right. Next, we have our time for general public comment. People can come and comment on anything that's not on the action or business agenda items for three minutes. And when you come to the podium, please say your name and whether you're a city resident. Do we have anyone tonight?
I don't have any.
Okay. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Has everyone reviewed the consent agenda as published?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as published?
I move to accept the consent agenda as published.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion, a second to approve the consent agenda as published. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next, we'll move on to our business agenda item, items. Donna, has anyone signed up for any little item?
No, Karen's not.
Okay. The first one is our committee director, Mark Ziegler, about the MaceCom.
Excuse me. Great, thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. I'm bringing to you today a draft lease with MaceCom. MaceCom is our 911 services provider countywide, and they are housed here in the Civic Center. The city leases, or has leased that, just over 24,000, 2,400, excuse me, square feet to MaceCom since 2009, when they separated from the city. They used to be basically a city department. So, at that time, they separated, went on their own. That lease agreement was established, and it expired in December 31st, 2018. So, we've been working with MaceCom staff, as well as internally, to develop a revised lease agreement, more accurately reflects current liability and insurance standards, as well as the billing. The billing was a bit, I think, confusing, and so, we came up with a more appropriate billing that you'll see in Attachment A for the lease agreement. So, one thing you will see in this lease is a lump sum payment. That is to cover the first six months of 2019. Because this lease was not in effect, we have not been billing MaceCom for those services up to this point. So, there is that lump sum to cover the first six months of the year, and then billings will take place monthly after that.
Questions for Mark?
I can just pass on, from the MaceCom board meeting, this was an item of discussion, and there were really no concerns from the board moving this forward. And I believe everything is on track for action on July 7th. And it sounds like staff has got any of the concerns handled. And again, from the board's perspective, there really wasn't any further conversation there, so just want to pass that along.
Very good.
Answered one of my questions. And the second question, relative to payments made in the past, is this basically equivalent, close to, as far as the amount?
No, it's upwards of about $900 a month, more. I think we more, I think we're more appropriately collecting particularly staff time with our custodial staff down there. I don't think that was necessarily being accounted for appropriately over the years of the lease, that maybe raises and benefit packages weren't equivalently proportioned out for this agreement. So, that's one thing. What we're using is actual time spent, too. I think there is some numbers there that didn't actually capture the amount of time spent. So, we're using 2018 actual numbers in there that we collect through staff, and then using 2019 salary rates to apply to that. I think that gives us a more accurate figure of what's actually happening down there. In addition to the utility costs, it's actual 2018 costs, supplies, what we're actually spending on providing the supplies in the restrooms and throughout the facility there, and capturing those direct costs. So, there is some increases.
Seeing nothing else for Mark. Do we concur to move this ahead of the action agenda for July 2nd?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Next, City Jeff, City Manager Jeff Knighton is going to talk to us about appointing a council member to the Tiny Village Advisory Committee for the Shelton project.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. As the council discussed at our last council meeting on June 4th, it is the desire of the lessee and of the council to appoint a council member to the advisory board for the Tiny Homes Village. And I would ask that the council deliberate and select a member to attend those meetings.
Okay. I will lead off, that I've talked to several, I've had no expressed interest except for a couple of council members, and the two I've talked to would prefer not to do it right now. And I am more than willing to accept it if there's no one else who would like to take it on.
I'm more than willing to allow the mayor to accept it.
I'm saying it's yours.
And I will say that at least one council member is very interested, and just didn't feel this was the right time. So, possibly in a year or two, even sooner, we could look forward to a switch, which would be fine, I think.
Bob, will there be briefings back to the council from time to time?
That's my plan.
Okay.
And I would anticipate that this, like our other committees, would be something we could review on an annual basis, so reassess at that time and see what that looks like.
One of the new council members may have an interest. Okay. Councilmember Schmidt.
The only other input I was going to add to this is just, it sounds like we're comfortable with an annual sort of report on this, and I had some bullet points that I've been ruminating on in terms of what I would want to know, and, you know, vis a vis the concerns about the project, and the positives about the project initially, and just to, you know, keep the public informed as well. And then, second, if I may, is there an established meeting schedule already, or is this just kind of getting off the ground, or?
As far as I'm aware, there is no established schedule yet. They're forming the committee, and then we'll establish whether that's on a monthly basis or a quarterly basis. We're not sure yet. But we will keep the council informed of any updates on that front.
I'll just pass on. I talked to two people that are on the board currently, or will be on the board, and they're looking at more members and then deciding on a fixed date and time. And initially, they thought it would probably be monthly. That's just additional feedback, not set in stone yet, but initially monthly, and then hopefully moving into quarterly after that.
And since you've spoken to people on the board, do you have, do you have a semblance of what the board's responsibilities are going to be?
It's going to be, I know what my field of board's responsibilities will be, and that will be adhere, you know, sure, we have adherence to any legal issues, which includes the city lease, outreach probably, and community involvement. I mean, that's, I think that's, I think that's, I'm speaking for the two people I know, and that's pretty much high on their list. And I should not say they're on the board. They probably will be two members.
Highly likely, potentially.
Yes.
Understood.
And just that when you do get on that board, and when it comes a time when you're going to start taking applications or whatnot, I know of several homeless vets or vets that are kind of not in established housing. So, that list, I have people that I think might be interested to be on that list. I don't think that's before it's built, is going to be the first item on your agenda. But however that comes down, I think, I think input on who might be on that list, if there is a list.
It's going to be ran through the coordinated entry.
Yes, that's going to be my response, councilmember. The board, I don't think will get involved in that. It's going to be through coordinated entry through Crossroads, which is the county assigned coordinated entry.
So, if someone was interested, they could even have a conversation with Crossroads right now about that, is that?
I won't say that, because it's still a ways off, but it probably wouldn't hurt.
Okay. Because that's going to be the authority over the management of that, is through Crossroads?
My understanding, all coordinated, all entries for those facilities like this will be through the coordinated entry, which in this county is Crossroads.
Oh, okay. Appreciate that. Thank you very much.
That's, again, my understanding.
Yeah, well, always talk to them.
Okay. So, do we need to vote on that, or we have consensus approval that I'm the nominee?
Good with that.
I think you got consensus.
Yeah, very similar to the vote you had to move something forward to the action agenda, it's fine.
Okay.
You're it.
Next item.
Next item was the item I mentioned earlier, the delegates for the AWC conference. The only duty that I can determine that the delegates from each city are required to do is vote on the AWC Board of Directors. That happens at the annual conference in Spokane, and the letter states that we can appoint up to three. So, we could have one delegate from Shelton, two or three, and I would ask the council to discuss that. I do think that only council members that will be attending in Spokane, since that's the only duty, would be appropriate to nominate as a delegate.
Okay. So, there's five of us going, I believe?
I would like to be one.
Okay. Councilmember McDowell would like to be one?
Nominate Deidre.
I think it would be appropriate for the mayor to sit in as one of the delegates as the representative from the city.
Thank you, Deidre.
Happy to volunteer you anytime.
And Councilmember Inesco was trying to volunteer you, so would you like?
I'm happy to do so.
Okay. Is that okay with you, Councilmember Cronz?
Sounds good.
So, the three, myself, Deputy Mayor Peterson, and Councilmember McDowell.
Okay, thank you.
Right? That was easy.
Come on, tell you get the homework.
He didn't say that.
Oh, there's one?
Can I resign?
You just can't go, I like that name, I'll vote for him.
Next, we're on to the action agenda. Do we have anyone signed up for any item?
We cannot.
Okay. Thanks, Donna. First action agenda item is designation of truck routes through Shelton. Public Works Director Craig Gregory has details for us.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, after last meeting, we bring back to you the second reading of the ordinance to establish truck routes, designated truck routes, and hearing, no changes from the council. It is unchanged at this point. On the routes that we proposed at the last meeting, we did make a minor change to the ordinance late to include the portion that was left out before last meeting, and that was the section between 13th Street and the city limits on Wallace Nealon Boulevard. So, that is listed within the ordinance language at this point. So, unless you have any questions or changes, we request a second reading and moving forward with the truck routes.
Okay. Donna, would you provide a second reading, please?
Yes. Ordinance number 1939-0519, an ordinance of the city of Shelton, Washington, establishing designated truck routes and amending Shelton Municipal Code, Chapter 11.06, relating to size, weight, load regulations, and street closures.
Okay, thank you, Donna. Do we have a motion?
I move to adopt ordinance number 1939-0519, an ordinance of the city of Shelton, Washington, designating truck routes and amending Chapter 11.06 of the Shelton Municipal Code relating to size, weight, load regulations, and street closures.
Second.
Okay, motion and second. Any further discussion? We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number 1939-0519, an ordinance of the city of Shelton, Washington, designated truck routes and amending Chapter 11.06 of the Shelton Municipal Code relating to size, weight, load regulations, and street closure. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Second action agenda item is back to Craig to speak about the chip seal project.
Thanks again, Mayor. And councilmembers, we bring back to you the chip seal contract proposed for this year's maintenance of roadways. We did have four responsive bidders, with the low bidder coming in at just under $225,000 for the proposed roadways to be chip sealed. Also, with that chip seal comes some maintenance coat, second layer chip seal, maintenance coats through the pathways or wheel paths of those, also including some crack sealing before the actual chip seal will take place also. Again, reiterate what we told you last meeting, this is slightly over budget. $200,000 was budgeted for this portion for 2019, but we are proposing to lower slightly the residential paving for this year to complete schedules that we are including within the contract proposed. So, slightly less, $225,000 budgeted this year for residential paving, which will reduce slightly by about $10,000, $10,000 to $12,000, to cover the rest of this contract. A portion of this contract, I did mention, just short of $225,000. A portion of that will be paid by the hospital. They did have some construction work out on 13th Street that they agreed to pay a portion of the overall contract to cover the section that they had to chip seal anyway, with a couple of patches that they had to do. So, that ended up being about $12,000 that will reduce this down to about $212,000 of city funds that will go towards this contract.
Thank you, Craig.
You're welcome.
Any questions, Mr. Craig?
Just a comment, and I don't know, I just kind of fit it in, because we're talking about roads, if it's okay. I just wanted to really thank you, not just as a councilperson for the city of Shelton, but as a personal friend of yours for the hard work you have put into this road project over here, $16 million, Basin III, the roundabout, and, you know, I just greatly appreciate that. I know the quality of work that is to try and manage something like that, and I, it's coming to an end, and I just, I mean, even with hidden bridges and things like that and stuff, I really appreciate the service that you've given to the city of Shelton. So, that's my comment.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Thank you, councilmember.
Second.
I had something, Bob, real quick.
Okay. For Craig.
First of all, I echo what Gary is saying, but second of all, I have a question on the chip seal. You know, up there on Wallace Nealon, that roadway, the wheel, the wheel, what'd you call them, wheel?
The wheel pass.
The wheel pass are pretty indented, right?
Ready.
Especially at the stoplight there. What my question is, will any of that fill in some of that?
Chip seal does not fill void.
It does not fill in, it's real thin.
But let's remember, that intersection is not owned by the city of Shelton. That's not part of this contract. This contract, the paving or the chip seal limits will start just to the east of that intersection. That is a state-owned intersection.
Okay.
We have been working with WashDOT, just had them in about three weeks ago. We had a discussion with the new director of the Southwest Region, which we are a part of at local programs, and he agrees. We have some issues out there that we need to take care of. They really would like us to take ownership of that intersection that is failing, at least in our minds, for the citizens of Shelton. It seems to be failing. We agreed to take that intersection over as soon as they bring it up to standards.
Yeah.
And that was, the conversation is, let's put some money into that, make sure we get it up to standards, not only the road pavement condition, but also signalization. They've got some ADA ramp issues, some lighting issues, basically all aspects of complete streets, they need to really bring up to standards before we take that.
So, how far down, do we start at the next stoplight?
No, we start just east of that intersection, basically at the crosswalk stop bar.
Okay.
On the east side of that location, right in front of, I think it's Heritage Bank.
Yeah, Heritage Bank, yeah.
Right there.
The other question I had about chip seal was, you know, you go out on these county roads, and you see chip seal on a lot of county roads. And they do a pretty good job of it. I know the one I traveled the most out Spencer Lake area is pretty well done by Pioneer School and, but there's also, is that chip seal? Sometimes there's a black-colored chip seal or coating. Is there a difference?
It's, I think what you're referring to is the fog seal.
Fog seal.
Over the top of chip seal. So, basically, what they'll do is they come in and they'll put down a layer of liquid asphalt, and then put the rock on top of that, and then they'll spray a coat over the top of it to turn it black and basically seat much, much better the rock that's in place. They'll sweep it before they actually put that fog seal down. That is included within this contract.
It is, okay.
Yes. This contract also includes an upgraded oil, P3. Most counties and cities use P2. It's got a little less actual oil, petroleum product in it. This has a little bit more, should get that rock to seat a little better. We did pay for an upgraded oil, since we are looking at a very highly traveled way on all of these streets that we're proposing to do this year. And that was, that did come highly recommended by most of the contractors that bid on this project.
Okay. Any questions, Craig? Okay, do we have a motion?
I move to approve the 2019 chip seal project by authorizing the mayor to sign the contract with Sierra Fay Corporation for completion of schedules A and B. Second.
Okay. A motion and second. Any further discussion on the motion?
Just a timing, once this has, it's been awarded action, and then what's roughly the timeframe? Do you think the contractor will be able to mobilize?
Timing, looks like it's going to be sometime in late August. They'll be completing that project, should only take a few days to get through that. And then, tying that in, just to let you know, we did delay our long line striping this year in all of Shelton except for the downtown core, basically the parade route. So, right after that, we are right now bidding out the long line striping for the city. That'll take place just after we finish this chip seal project in late August. So, hopefully, keep our fingers crossed that the weather holds, you know, into the first part of September. Normally, we're pretty good through about mid-October, so I think we'll be, have plenty of, plenty of time to complete this.
And one more follow-up to that, just understanding that the hospital project is still kind of rolling along there. They're completely done doing anything impacting roadway surface, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
They've done their, they've done their water main tap and some storm drainage out there, but I think for the most part, they are finished up in the roadway.
They're all on the construction, facility construction end of it.
Yeah, and they've done some patchwork out there, asphalt patching in those trenches now.
Cool.
Deputy Mayor.
And as daughter road crew, I know that one of the things that's really important about when the chip seal goes down is making sure that folks aren't stopping hard or putting pressure on the new rocks. Are we concerned at all about the timing with school going back in mid-September and really having time for it to kind of get set before we have an increase in traffic pattern in those areas?
It is, it is a concern. We are not doing the intersection portion. That is the proposed traffic circle at Shelton Springs Road and Wallace Nealon. So, should relieve that somewhat in that intersection. It won't, it won't go back too far outside of that intersection. But, yeah, obviously, with the volume of traffic that we have within the city, a little different than out on rural county roads. So, yes, it is, it is a concern. That is why we went with P3 oil also. The set time is much reduced by quite a bit over P2 oil, and they'll be able to sweep that and get that set with the rollers and hopefully with traffic over almost a month before school's back in, so.
And I assume that we'll have a reduced speed zone for some period of time, hopefully a short period of time after that work is completed, just to ensure that the project is maintained?
Yes, likely before we start that project, much like we did with Downtown Connector. We will come back to the council with a reduced speed limit for you to approve before we get going in those areas.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay.
No.
Councilor Dorsey, did you?
I, I was going to add that, well, just add it, that I'm sure glad that we're doing this. I, you know, to save, put some money aside to use for maintenance on roads is, we gotta, we gotta, we gotta keep up what we have, and otherwise, we're going to be in a big pickle later, so I just wanted to stress that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the 2019 chip seal project by authorizing me to sign the contract with Sierra Santa Fe Corporation for completion of schedules A and B. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item, back to Director Gregory regarding purchase of some equipment for the wastewater treatment plant.
Thank you again, Mayor, council members. So as we brought to you two weeks ago, the UVT and turbidity purchases for the main wastewater treatment plant, discharges into Oakland Bay, Hammersley Inlet, not only for redundancy, but also increased treatment, which will help meet our requirements for our newly and high, highly anticipated new permit from Department of Ecology, but also hoping to lessen the burden on the shellfish growers out in Hammersley Inlet and reduce, this will reduce that restricted area back just a touch and improve the, the quality of water out in Hammersley and Oakland Bay. It is under budget for both of the UVT and turbidity for the 2019 budget, slightly under after we figure all installation and improvements into this. Not only the contract of purchasing, but also installing. It's still under budget for both of these to complete this project.
Okay, thanks, Craig.
You're welcome.
Questions for Craig?
Timing, I assume this will all be completed before high flows later in the year?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely. Hopefully, contract should take about a month for purchase and then installation just after that. So sometime towards the end of the summer when we get the real low flows. And we will be bringing back to you, just talking about flows, we will be bringing back to you shortly, an update on the Basin III project and INI overall and the reduction of INI here in the next meetings to come. So you'll see what that looks like.
Okay, great. Right, so do we have a motion?
I move to adopt resolution number 1146-0519 and authorize the mayor to sign purchase order numbers PO 0037 and PO 0038 for the purchase of instruments and equipment for the disinfection system at the wastewater treatment plant.
Second.
Okay, further discussion on the motion? Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt resolution number 1146-0519 and authorize me to sign purchase orders number PO 0037 and PO 0038 for the purchase of instruments and equipment for the disinfection system at the wastewater treatment plant. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, switch to Mark on listing agreement with the sale of property on 120 West Neeland Street.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members have before you today the listing agreement for 120 West Neeland Street, which is a city parcel that was declared surplus back on November 20th of 2018. This listing agreement is with Richard Beckman Realty Group, the city's contracted real estate broker. And let's see, the only changes since the last, since the brief on June 4th was a more accurate date of the start of the listing, and then the addendum is included that gives the council the approval of the purchase-sale agreement contingent, contingent upon the, you know, decision in an open public meeting. So I think that addressed one of your questions a couple weeks ago, that you'd have final say whether to accept or reject any offer.
Questions for Mark?
So I've been giving this some, some thought, and I'm wondering if what the council's thoughts would be on attempting to make this sale potentially a little bit more marketable in terms of potentially investing in some like artistic renderings of what could be used for that property, how that dovetails into the downtown visioning plan. Right now, it's a concrete slab with existing utility connections behind the rits and abutting, you know, other properties, but you know, the passerby walking by looking at it or looking at it on, through commercial broker outlets may not see the vision that we see in the city and/or the vision we need in the city. And I'm wondering what you guys think, not to put the brakes on this at this point, but just something that's been kind of nagging at my brain, just want to know what you guys kind of think about that.
Councilor Dorsey?
I think it's a great idea. It's kind of like when you, you know, put your property up for sale, you want to make it look the best. I was just down in that area today, and I'm going, someone with a lot of imagination is going to have to buy this piece of property to make it look good.
Yeah.
So.
I could say a couple words there on the subject. Well, we've been talking about selling that property since the day we tore it down, and we have been talking about listing it, and now we're at the second, we've already approved a realtor, and we've given this to a realtor to sell. And so it's kind of late in the game on that one, but I would easily, easily highly recommend you or some of your friends buying it and doing that with it. So at this point, I could not support pulling that back, but I would highly recommend anybody that would like to do something nice and for the city to buy that property to do it. I mean, we've been talking for many, many years about selling excess city property, and so, I mean, I'm not against the idea. I'm making that into something that would fit with everything, but probably, you know, like six years ago, that would have been probably the time to bring it up. So I probably would, would not support that at this time.
I'm not interested in investing money to make $5,000 more dollars.
Any other comments? Go ahead, Councilor Dorsey.
Nothing. Okay, I'll, I'll just make comment. I, it was a larger property or something that maybe we had more time on, but I think we, like it's been said, we've had this on the books for a while. We wanted to sell it, and it's a test of market, and I guess if we don't get the value out of the, we think is there, we have the right to do exactly that, so.
So what's the rush?
There's no rush in my mind, except it's been out there for at least a year, so.
Yeah, I don't know, just, again, the discourse on this is just, it's surplus city property. It's not really doing anything right now. I don't know what the investment would be, and I don't know what the investment would potentially gain. I don't have that background. But I do know that going up, snapping some pictures of it with a digital camera, as is, I'm not sure what kind of, kind of investment that's going to return for us in the long run, but that's just, just some thoughts there. Again, I, I don't believe we have anything nagging at us that this needs to be offloaded today. Yes, I agree, timing. We have our three-touch rule, and you know, my, in my thoughts here, did not come up during the last meeting. Yes, I may have missed the boat on this one. However, I just believe as a council, you know, these are opportunities for us to, to take a step and, and think about things, but it's all, it's all up to the remaining six, so.
Any other?
Well, I just think it's a wonderful idea, and it's not, nothing wrong with bringing it up at this point, but remember that if somebody purchases it, housing is a big need.
Yeah.
And somebody that purchases it probably would like to continue on with getting those in, you know, water and sewer rates included in that one. And so I imagine they'd be moving fairly quickly on providing more housing, which might be not a bad idea. It sounds like it would work right in with the vision we have, so, and they might move a lot faster than a city would move, just off the top of my head. I mean, so I, I don't think, I don't think whoever gets the property is going to get it and then do something bad with it. And if they did something good with it, then isn't that good for the city? So I don't, that's probably my thought on it.
I mean, is staff comfortable with the amount of the property?
What we have is the recommendation from our broker that we contracted with, and we are, I think, relatively comfortable with what the amount is, and the council does have the right to reject any bids that they feel are not appropriate.
Okay, I'm going, at this point, I'm going to ask, see if we have a motion, and we continue discussion if we have a motion. Okay?
I move to authorize the mayor to sign the sale and listing agreement and the addendum for the surplus property located at 120 West Neeland Street with Richard Beckman Realty Group.
Second.
Okay, so now we have a motion on the table. Any further discussion from the issues that have been brought up before we vote?
Well, if I may, well,
Deputy Mayor?
While I agree with the concept of that idea, I think it goes to a larger conversation we've been having surrounding economic development and community planning. I don't know if this is the property that necessarily will gain an immense amount by doing that, but I think that the exercise in and of itself is worthwhile, and I think it goes to the larger point of having a thoughtful design around how we want this community to act and look and function. I don't know that, I think this is necessarily the property to do that with, partly because of its size and location, but partly because I think there are other areas that we could focus and get a metro to return, not only on our dollar, but also in terms of community investment. So that's kind of where I'm at.
Further comments? Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt resolution, excuse me, wrong, wrong line. We have a motion and a second to authorize me to sign the sale and listing agreement and addendum for surplus property located at 120 West Neeland Street with Richard Beckman Realty Group. In favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, motion carries. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Okay, and then we have an added agenda item for?
For the Basin, Basin III grant extension, and I'll turn it over to Director Gregory.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members, we had a discussion with Direct Appropriations this morning. We called them after email was sent out by Direct Appropriations notifying everybody of the upcoming deadline date to submit final pay estimates to, to Direct Appropriations and Commerce of June 30th. At that time, we asked about the extensions of those three grants that we have with them, and they had forgotten about all of the extensions that they have for all cities. So right after we reminded them, they sent out a, an email reminding everybody if they need a time extension to get those in, and right after that, the conversation was about timing, and those need to be signed by June 30th, the deadline date. So without having another meeting before then, we are asking that the mayor be authorized to sign the amendments to increase the deadline date by a year. So it would be June 30th of 2020. Projects are slated right now to be closed out sometime and finished up in September, close out likely by the end of the year, so it would definitely be within that timeframe of June 30th, 2020.
Okay, thanks, Craig.
You're welcome.
Questions for Craig? All right, seeing none. Do we have a motion?
This is the tough part, when we don't have something to read in front of us, now we have to try to remember what Craig just said, which is...
I approve it for the three amendments for the Department of Commerce grants and authorize the mayor to sign them once they are received by the city.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion on the motion, or any discussion on the motion? Let me rephrase that. Okay, it's been moved and seconded, the three amendments for the Department of Commerce grants and authorize me to sign them once they are received by the city.
Mrs. Mayor, if we could interrupt you just for a second? This just brings to my attention, we did not receive the extension for the library for the Commerce grant for the library repairs. I'm not, I'm not aware of it, didn't receive an email today or, or...
Can we?
Communication from Commerce at this point, so it may be to come. I can reach out to them tomorrow morning.
So this is a touch. You're doing a touch.
Well, if they have the same deadline as, as these...
Do you have a DSC grant we can add to this?
How about we pass this motion and make a separate motion?
Agreed.
There you go.
Okay, this is, we've already seconded this, correct?
Robert's rules.
This is the second one, correct?
It has.
Okay, and we're up to the vote. So all in favor of, of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now, can we have a similar motion for the library grant?
I'll give you a little background, yes. We are, we are in the midst of the library repairs, which is, which is direct appropriation to the Department of Commerce. We recently awarded the bid for the roof repairs. I'm bringing to you next meeting the award for the painting and siding repairs, as well, these projects are slated to begin sometime in July, by the end of July, and to be completed, obviously, this year, but not by the end of June. So I have not been communicated with, or I've received no communication from the Department of Commerce for an extension of, of that grant, which like Craig has received. But I will reach out tomorrow morning and, and see if that's appropriate, and if that's the same guidelines they're going to provide for this, for that grant.
Do you have a contingency motion available?
I do.
Okay. You got it.
I move that the council approve any amendments for the Department of Commerce grants to include but unlimited to the library repairs project be authorized and signed by the mayor once they are received by the city.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, there's a motion and a second. You didn't write it out.
It's shorthand, I can read it back.
Okay, why don't you read it back for me, Deputy Mayor?
Thank you.
I move that the council approve any amendments for the Department of Commerce, including but unlimited to the library repairs project for grants and authorize the mayor to sign them once they are received by the city.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you, Deputy. Okay, I think that's it. Correct?
Hope so.
We have our second general comment period. Anyone signed up?
I have no one.
Okay, so next, we move on to City Manager's Report.
Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A comment made by Councilmember Dorsey during the council reports earlier this evening reminded me, I probably, and this is a mistake on my part, forgot to mention to all of you, that we did have the landfill tour scheduled for the end of July. However, a couple of council members who really wanted to attend wouldn't be able to make it and/or would be out of town. So we are going to reschedule that in, for August. We will let you know the date. We also want to make sure that when that tour occurs, that it's been noticed appropriately and all the other things that we need to do to make sure that we stay within the rules. The fee schedule resolution, we did advertise the hearing tonight for the master fee schedule, so I did want to mention that we will be moving that to July 2nd as a date certain for those that are interested and would like to attend. I wanted to make sure I mentioned that on the record tonight. And lastly, I wanted to turn it over to Chief Moody to talk about fireworks within the city of Shelton.
Mayor and council, I just wanted to remind everybody in the city that fireworks are illegal in the city of Shelton within the city limits. Oftentimes, you'll hear people say they live in Shelton, and they actually live out at Harstein Island, or they live towards Kamelchi, or that's maybe Shelton. The city limits, they are illegal. That was adopted years ago, and in talking with the city manager, we are putting out some extra patrols in combination with Mason Fire that evening. You know, I, I understand the fun of the fireworks. I understand enjoying them, and unfortunately, we sit between two tribal areas that sell explosives. And when I say explosives, they're explosives. These, these aren't your safe and sane sparklers. As such, those patrols will be enforcing the fireworks law. As such, those patrols will be enforcing the fireworks laws as they are on the books. So I can anticipate that there will be some phone calls in my office following the Fourth of July that somebody was cited for having illegal fireworks in town, but I just wanted to reiterate that all fireworks, no matter what, are illegal any time of the year, be it Fourth of July or New Year's Eve, et cetera, unless you have a permit. Any questions?
Would you?
Yes?
Would you want the public to call, who would they call if their next door neighbor was shooting fireworks off?
I would prefer they call the non-emergency number for the MaceCom Dispatch Center. If it's an emergency, obviously call nine one one, but those are busy lines already. I would say call the non-emergency number for the MaceCom Dispatch Center.
And do you have that number?
I don't have it in front of me.
I have it.
Three six zero four two, four two six, four four, four one.
Four two six, four four, four one.
That's just the, oh, okay, I thought that was just the normal city number, but maybe.
That's the non-emergency number for the dispatch center, it's not a city number. So yeah, that's the best route to go in a non-emergency situation.
Counselor Schmidt?
Citation? What is, do you, what's roughly the penalty for?
I don't have the bail schedule in front of me. I've got the ordinances, but there are several ordinances on the books.
It's a ticket, chief?
It could be an arrest.
Okay.
It says, no person shall ignite, discharge, use, or explode any safe and sane fireworks or ignitable trick novelty devices termed in the WAC code. And this falls in, I'm sorry?
It's a misdemeanor.
There you go.
Wow, thank you.
Any person violating any of the provisions of the chapter shall be guilty of a misdemeanor that's deemed to have committed severance for each day which a violation committed or continues. So theoretically, you could be arrested numerous times, over and over again, for lighting off fireworks if you haven't learned the first time. And if anybody has any questions on it, they can look in the eight point six, four point zero one zero section of the city municipal code for all the definitions that go with it.
Thank you.
Anything else for Chief, Councilmember Cranz?
Just probably a recommendation. I know we, this is like the third or fourth year that we've done this. Is there, to get the message out, you know, because nobody wants to put people in jail or give them a misdemeanor. I mean, I know that we have our little, you know, our newsletters and we have our email addresses and our websites and stuff, but probably wouldn't be a bad idea to have a little ad in the paper and possibly even on like the fiber one, you know, maybe that Jeff Slaky guy or something might, you know, say, hey, you know, guys, don't remember that this is really, we can't, so I would highly recommend that we advertise that a little bit more because we're up in the game, because we didn't, we, we were pretty male over the first couple of years. And so, you know, nobody wants to give out fines, but, and or tickets, but I think that wouldn't be a bad idea. So do you know what we're going to do?
We do, do have a communication plan for this particular issue. I believe Chief is going on iFiber to talk about fireworks in an interview with Mr. Slaky, as well as all the city reader boards at each entrance to the city on Railroad Avenue and various other spots where people are coming into town for approximately a week prior to the Fourth of July to make sure that that message gets out.
Great.
As we all know, a person can be told many times, and those are the ones.
Just like anything we do, enforcement is not necessarily what we go for, it's education and compliance.
So like I said, a lot of people are confused where the city limits fall in several areas
of this city. One side of the street is county, the other side is city. And so we need to educate people where they live as well. So in calling that non-emergency number, that often clarifies that for us, is whether that's a city call or a county call.
Chief, I know it's not your responsibility. Do you know if the county's doing any type of outreach to make sure that people in the county know they can shoot off fireworks, but only legal in the state of Washington fireworks?
I have not seen any outreach from the county. I have not typically in the years past seen outreach from the county. I know, I think it was two years ago, when even Squaxam Tribal said, you will not set off fireworks within tribal boundaries because of the drought situation, but yet they sold them. So it's kind of a mixed message that you get out of some of this.
Glad you're buying them, but don't shoot them off here.
Exactly.
Thank you very much, Chief.
You bet. Thank you.
Anything else, Jeff?
That's all I have.
Okay, so our next agenda item is items for tonight for new discussion. I know Councilmember Cranz had an item.
Just, I've been having some spirited debates and I know that the word Facebook is not the best place to have them, about, and I, I hope that the people I'm talking to kind of get the message that when we design the road that goes on up Olympic Highway North, that those corners and the little planners and the, that, that wasn't just like we thought, oh, let's just do this, that some engineers actually designed them and we had conversations with the fire department and with logging trucks and that, I was in some of those conversations. That wasn't just an idea we pulled out of some book somewhere. We, those widths and all that, that has been, that is an engineered system to handle the legal traffic flows and whatnot. I, can you, yeah, I've been telling them we did it that way, but some people just seem to think we just said, oh gee, let's just do whatever we want. So can you address that? But I don't know, you know, I mean, is, am I right on that? Didn't an engineer design that?
Absolutely.
Yeah, and, and we did talk to the fire and the logging trucks and we did talk to emergency service vehicles and people about this.
We also had two very well-attended public meetings. Well over a hundred people showed up to both of those meetings, so very good input from not only our professional engineers, but also the public at the time of design, so.
Well, that's what I told them.
And there were changes made based on those meetings with the public?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Things that had to meet professional engineer design standards and, and WashDOT standards. If we strayed outside of that, that wouldn't be a good thing. But yeah, anything that was suggested that was reasonable, that we thought would benefit the community for walkability, whatever it might be, complete streets type activities, if it met design standards and WashDOT standards, absolutely there were changes made. We heard some of the concerns that were out there and tried to address those, much like the, the swale in between the road edge and, and the multi-use path. We heard that the public wouldn't feel safe and, and designed around that, tried to make some provisions to help them feel a little safer while they're out there walking in those areas, so absolutely.
Thank you.
Do you mind if I help Craig out and address something on this?
Sure.
We had this discussion at least four weeks ago, where you asked myself and Mike Paddy some conversations about this. And I'd like to remind the council that I think it was during a council budget retreat, we were at the library and a DUI driver took one of those barriers head on. I can guarantee you the family of the car on the other side of that road is confident and happy that we put those in.
I bet.
The, the alternatives, we don't like to think about, but I mean, yes, does it delay traffic if something happens up there? Yes. Could it possibly save a life? Yes. And I think that's a little more important inconvenience for that, for safety for me anyways.
That was well-traveled then because Turner Street was closed down.
Yes.
I tell people that ask me about it all the time, that if somebody, if I was to give you six million dollars, would I have any, could I have any say in what it's going to look like? And they, then they start thinking about, well, maybe so.
We also had some goals going into that project also. Walkability was a, a, a very large goal. Traffic calming was another one. When we did the original speed study up there, we found that, I, I don't know the exact number, it was somewhere in the thirty seven point five range, I think it was thirty seven point two if I'm going off the top of my head from, from a year and a half ago, but well above the speed limit. So that was one of the priorities, was to, yeah, not only separate what we had, two lanes that were very close in, in proximity going in opposite directions at a very high rate of speed. So yeah, a few of those elements that, that we really wanted to accomplish and that were requirements of the Transportation Improvement Board, who gave us a pretty good portion of that entire project and, and meeting those requirements.
One last thing, Craig, how far have they made it up now?
Up Olympic Highway North?
Yeah.
They have not.
They have not gone any farther?
They have not started the hill section, they'll start it tomorrow.
Okay. They're still by the courthouse then.
Correct. They were down around Fourth Street.
Yeah.
Is where they left off. They're trying to tie in all of the side streets so that when we do open that, it will basically be a complete project. So tomorrow they are going to start from Fourth Street, tie in the rest of the side streets. They think tomorrow they'll be able to get the northbound lane paved entirely through the Seventh Street intersection all the way to C Street and then try to complete that on Thursday and have the entire roadway completed by Thursday afternoon. That's, that's the plan and the goal at this point.
Counselor?
I absolutely head over heels impressed with what I saw with the roundabout and everything. Just, it's just, we stand there and you look down both ends of Olympic Highway, Alder Street and everything, it's just like, wow, you know? And these are teaching moments, guys. I mean, these are opportunities for us to showcase how projects get completed. I mean, this doesn't happen very often in, in our city, correct? We're not doing major multimillion dollar projects, capital improvement projects every single, every single day of the week, every single year. So these are opportunities for us to kind of explain how these projects get pulled off and how design works and how the process moves along. And, you know, not everybody's going to agree with it and quite frankly, you know, the social media sphere is a really easy way to be negative and to continue to promote the negativity around it, but dude, this is a, this is a one hundred percent the right thing and I'm, I think it's been fantastic and I'm real proud of staff and everybody who's been able to pull it off on time, on budget, within scope. What more could you ask for? This is the right thing, so.
Andy Arnez and I talked today. I think it is, it is interesting how quickly we in the public forget what that roadway used to look like. We're going to put some before and after pictures out in a press release soon and, and just remind everybody kind of where we were at before and, and where we've come to now. And it has been a learning experience for not only myself, but our staff also. We've got another very large project coming next year on a very well-traveled roadway of railroad avenues. So we'll take some of those, those learning opportunities that we got out of this project that affected a lot of businesses. That particular project will affect some businesses and, and some better communication, signage, getting folks in and out of those businesses and, and just overall moving forward with projects and, and how we do that, but design and public outreach also. But it's been a learning experience for myself also and I'm sure we'll get better as we move along with some of these and, and another one next year that will be affecting the downtown motoring public and, and not only motorists, but also business owners. So look forward to doing that one also next year and completing another really good project.
I just want to say that that is the prettiest roundabout I have ever seen. I love the red.
Thank you.
And it was, it's just really nice. Big improvement.
Anything else we could order?
I had been on it Sunday morning. A few times, yeah, I even videoed it.
Thanks, Frank.
I said, I survived the roundabout in Shelton.
I went down at eleven thirty one night.
Traffic surge. Traffic surge.
We're going to have to start putting a dollar in a jar?
Right.
Okay, anything else tonight? Okay, our next meeting will be July second, two thousand nineteen, at six P M. We adjourn.